I'd like to call this board meeting to order and welcome everybody here and appreciate you coming out. And first, we're gonna have a moment of silence. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, approval of the agenda. I think we have one item we want to add to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Out of the Public Works Committee evening this evening, from earlier this evening, the committee was recommending that the board consider the item that was tabled from the last board meeting, the consideration of a lease or purchase for the solid waste loader. So I guess if we add that to the agenda, it would be item nine F.
That'd be what?
Nine F. That's an action item.
Okay, add that one item to the agenda. Any other changes or recommendations?
Mr. Chair, I've moved for the approval of the agenda as submitted with the addition of nine F.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have citizen comment period, and I only have one person signed up, and that's Eve and Megan Johnson.
I'm speaking for both of us. He does the thinking and I do the writing.
Do you write the checks, too?
Uh, do I keep them? Megan Johnson, District Seven. Proverbs eighteen seventeen says, "The first to plead his case seems right until another comes to examine him." Tonight's topic is about communication, not bees. Keith and I follow the rules and observe ongoing patterns that affect Bedford County citizens. In addition, we try to refrain from spontaneous comments and often give measured responses to temper emotion that accompanies controversial topics. In contrast, during the last meeting, there were several issues grouped together in one repetitious subject that has come before both governing bodies several times over recent months, to which we took exception. Our concern was not due just to the subject at hand, but a number of past commission votes that we believe were questionable. We are busy people who do not have time to attend every single governmental meeting to ascertain the reasoning behind every single vote and do not profess to be able to read minds. We simply are questioning these issues that we deem are outside governmental authority. In fact, we believe quite a number of ordinances and codes should be repealed, of which we will address at a later date. The tone of communication with some governing boards is not a them against us issue. It should be a let's work together resolution. Name-calling or a punitive attitude does not foster cooperation. If governing members do not believe we, the citizens, understand a subject, then it is the governing board's responsibility to communicate in such a fashion as to educate its constituency. As such, we will forward a copy of these and future comments directly to the commission. Having made these points, we were pleased members of both bodies voted in favor of the resolution to follow Virginia state ordinances because we now only have one elected body with which to address the subject instead of three governing bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I don't have anyone else signed up. Is it anyone else that would like to comment on anything? All right, here are none. I close the citizen comment period. Next, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Hicks.
Yeah, we only have one item this evening, and it's a resolution authorizing a change order for the portable scale rental and removal of the scale rental for the salt waste department at the landfill.
Any questions? All right, no questions, no discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved the adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Mr. Tuck. Two seconds. Mr. Sharp. Is this a roll call? Okay, Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Any questions, corrections, discussion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Okay, Ms. Bainsley. Any seconds?
Second.
Ms. Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We don't have a public hearing presentation tonight. Next, we have action and discussion items. First item is resolution authorizing annual appropriation, resolution zero eight one one two five dash zero two, and Ashley is gonna handle that one.
Good evening, everybody. So this request is part of our annual year-end processes. We are requesting reappropriation of fiscal year twenty-five funds to fiscal year twenty-six. Department heads and other staff submitted reappropriation requests totaling one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and staff is recommending a reappropriation of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. There are three recommendations specifically that are all tied into the policy. They were either ordered or budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five, and for various reasons, were not able to be paid for or completed in fiscal year twenty-five, so we're just requesting that we roll those funds forward. There is one request that we're not recommending, and I just wanted to kind of review that a little bit. The sheriff's office has a request to replace their live scan equipment, and this is due to a vendor change and a requirement that they'll have to be in compliance by July one of twenty twenty-six. The reason that we're not recommending reappropriation is that at the time that these requests were submitted, the actual cost and scope of that project was unknown. The quote that was submitted is assuming that we would have to fully replace the live scan equipment, and we may not need to do a full replacement. So we're not suggesting that they not move forward with the project and come into compliance, but rather that we do either a supplemental appropriation or a year-end adjustment during fiscal year twenty-six, once we know the full cost and scope of the project. Any questions?
Okay, here are no questions. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move with approval, resolution R. zero eight one one two five dash zero two.
Second. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Tuck. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have a consideration of resolution, year-end budget adjustments.
Okay, this is also part of our normal year-end processes. We are requesting one contingency fund transfer and three supplemental appropriations. The contingency fund transfer and the majority of the supplementals are just part of our, you know, normal processes. Things come in a little bit over budget or whatever for various reasons. The biggest portion of this year's year-end budget adjustment is due to CSA. As you may know, that's something that can change widely from year to year depending on the number of children in the program, and this year, we did have an uptick in private day placements. So of the increase in budget, which would be a million, seven thousand, about a million of that is tied to CSA. Of that, three hundred thousand would be the county share, which we can actually cover through other operational savings in the social services department during fiscal year twenty-five. So we're just requesting a supplemental appropriation of the funds that we have requested and will receive from the state to cover that.
Any questions? Here are none. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty-five year-end budget adjustments, resolution R. zero eight one one two five dash zero three.
All right.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Parker made the motion. Johnson made the second. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes, motion carries. Next, we have a consideration, resolution authorize the purchase of a new ambulance. That will be presented by Chief of Bankruptcy.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're here before you tonight to request approval to purchase a new ambulance for the career unit. This ambulance was designated in our new apparatus replacement plan back in December. It will replace a ambulance currently that is at the Good Station. Arrival date is twenty-four to thirty months out, and I would say that we came in at four hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. I'd like to note that this was forty-five thousand dollars under budget. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Just replace the one I saw getting towed down four sixty the other day.
No, not that one.
Any questions? Can I have a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of one new ambulance, resolution R. zero eight one one two five dash zero four. A second.
Motion by Ms. Parker, second by Ms. Bainsley. Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes, motion carries.
Next, consideration authorized purchase of miscellaneous camera equipment, and that will be presented by Sheriff Miller.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Board members. I stand before you tonight asking for the authorization of the county administrator to execute a contract with Leica Geo Systems in the purchase of a handheld three-D scanner and a handheld, excuse me, and a three-D scanner on a tripod for the Bedford County Sheriff's Office. This grant comes through the Attorney General's Office under Operation Ceasefire Grants. It will also be a fingerprint scanner at the cost of three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. The two laser scanners is one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. The intent of this grant is to support technology to prevent the violent crime in Virginia. There is no local match to this grant, and we wish to use this to help our investigators process crime scenes in the most efficient way.
Any questions for the sheriff?
There's no discussion, I would move to pass resolution R. zero eight one one two five dash zero five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bainsley, a second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Consideration of resolution authorize the county attorney to execute anyone he doesn't agree with, I mean, excuse me.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I need to renew my license to kill at some point anyway, but what's before you tonight is, this is the fifth of a number of settlements regarding to the nationwide opioid crisis. We're currently participating in four. This one in particular is kind of interesting with the Sackler family and Purdue Pharma. May recall that they were going to be discharged and bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy court overruled the settlement, and what resulted is what's before you tonight. We don't have an allocation yet to Bedford County, but their share to Virginia is one hundred and three million dollars. So passing the resolution tonight would simply allow us to participate in this settlement, and I would also note, there's another one with yet another company. It's gonna be right on the heels of this one, so we'll be looking at a six. We do have our consultant who's assisting staff in figuring out how to best spend those funds. I believe they're meeting later this month to discuss that.
Any other questions? Or any questions I should say?
I have a comment. In all my life, I've never seen that word effectuate.
Yeah.
I was kind of guessing there, but that's a fancy way of saying that. That's legal talk. That's one of them five-dollar words.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I've moved for the adoption of resolution R. zero eight one one two five dash oh six.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tuck, a second by Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next we have the, uh, I don't know what resolution number that was. I'll let you go ahead and present.
Probably oh seven.
Resolution RF eight one one two five oh seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the Public Works Committee, we discussed, uh, that we tabled at the last meeting whether to lease a rubber tire loader for the landfill or to purchase it. Uh, in the meeting, we went over, uh, explained to them the reasoning by why I had, uh, expressed the lease might be the better option is their current piece of equipment we have has over ten thousand hours on it. We've spent over the, uh, last couple of years over a hundred thousand in maintenance costs from breakdowns. Uh, also, when it breaks down, we have rental load, because we're gonna rent something to operate while we're doing that. Uh, the maintenance costs, the service costs, PM, all those add up. Um, in a lease, we would get something that's covered under warranty during that lease time. At the end of the four-year lease, um, we could turn it in and get a new piece of equipment. Because with the piece of equipment you get, you know, when you get it new, you're not gonna have many make breakdowns or anything, and you just have maintenance. Uh, and then you reach a point where you start getting the hours built up on it, and then your maintenance costs start piling up on you. And with these large piece of equipments, those costs are not cheap. So, our theory was if we lease something, at the end of the lease, we turn it in and get a new piece of equipment, stuff covered under warranty, uh, the maintenance, the PMs is included in the lease. Uh, if it breaks down or goes down, they would bring us something at no cost. We wouldn't have to rent anything. So, all those numbers add up, you know, um, to savings that we could do. And we felt like it was a better option. Um, you know, if we do this and we find out at the end of the lease that that's not the better way to go working, then we always have the option to buy. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, I, I do have a question. This thing says if purchased outright the same machine with the same warranty and maintenance package would total three hundred forty-nine thousand nineteen.
Actually, if you add up the lease payments, it's like two eighty, two ninety-eight is the lease payments with the option to buy at the end of it.
Well, this one says the total cost of the four-year lease term is three fifty-nine, one sixty, with the residual amount of one twenty-three nine. If the equipment is purchased at the end of the lease, making the total cost four eighty-three, sixty. So, unless I'm not interpreting these numbers correctly, seems to me we save roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we just buy it. And if it's worth a hundred and twenty-three nine at the end of, um, a four-year period, it seems like we could sell it to someone else and recoup a hundred and twenty-three nine of our three hundred and forty-nine, and our net cost would only be, uh, about two twenty-seven. So, that seems to me still the, the better option would be to purchase unless I'm not understanding the numbers.
Yeah, I, I think those numbers are, you're adding up correctly. During, now, if we bought it straight out, we would have the PM costs and be covering any breakdowns that happens and rental. It won't add up to a hundred thousand over that four-year period, but it would be a cost. Uh, the other thing we took into consideration, we talked about it, at the end of that four years, if we purchased it, not knowing where we'd be at budget-wise or board-wise, would we be able to stick on track to do that? Other people might have a different opinion in four years.
I mean, I, I guess, you know, it would already be paid for, and, and it would be an asset that theoretically it's still got some value left that we could sell to another agency or another group that needs one of these that we'd still recoup a decent amount of money, um, if it still has, uh, that much value left in it. So, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm looking at three forty-nine minus a hundred and twenty-four, even if I only got a hundred. Then I'm still thinking, okay, then we paid two fifty net cost instead of four eighty-three. That, I mean, that seems like we're much better off just buying it. I mean, unless...
Mr. Chair, um, in the cour- the course of the discussion, uh, prior to this meeting, I was under, under, I understood that the maintenance package was not included in the purchase. In other words, that under the terms of the lease, that we had maintenance to keep the machine up, um, a- aside from daily things like greasing the machine. And, uh, and then, of course, there was also the fact that if there was a breakdown, you had a, uh, a rental that was included at no additional cost. And, um, just reading this thing, it says the same warranty and maintenance package.
Yes, we can get the maintenance package whether we lease or purchase.
Okay, so, but a- as, as it says right there, it would total three hundred and forty-nine thousand. So, would that also include, and, and I don't, like I said, my experience with this kind of equipment is, is you're guaranteed about four thousand hours of pretty solid reliability. Um, and it, no matter how soon that four thousand hours comes, and at the end of that four thousand hours, I would certainly be looking to unload this thing. Um, but is, is there any, anything that is not included in the purchase maintenance package that you were getting in the lease?
Well, and the, the maintenance package is included is the PM, oil changers, filters.
Uh-huh.
So, that's what's included in that package.
In the purchase?
Yeah, in the, in the lease and the purchase.
So, so they're both the same?
Yeah, it only covers the PMs. Uh, under the lease, say you blow a hydraulic hose or a pump goes out, that's gonna be covered under the lease.
But under the purchase, it's not?
No. Not after the warranty runs out on those parts, yeah.
And, and the warranty is what on this machine?
Four years.
Four years.
For some stuff. Now hoses and stuff's not gonna be covered under that.
Right. Now...
But as we said, the average cost would be much less on a new machine.
Well, if a hose is something that, I mean, you can run over to Napa and, and get them to build you, and then you just lose some time during the day to fix it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't wanna be, um, reversing how I felt about it in, in the prior discussion, but I do wanna make sure we make the right decision, and I, I have to go along with what Mr. Sharp is saying. So, so if, if it's just a hydraulic hose or something like that, that wouldn't be covered after...
I, I think hoses and stuff are like a twelve-month.
Twelve-month, yeah. But again, there's, there're little items.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, but anything larger is up, good up to...
Yeah, the, the hydrostat transmission, uh, you know, injection pump, motor stuff would be under the four-year warranty.
Four years?
Mm-hmm.
And so certainly, I mean...
But the eight thousand, if the eight thousand hours comes at three years, that's the end of it.
Yeah.
It's not four, it's whichever comes first.
It's the hours, so if we, if we reached that at three, it would get swapped out.
Just, just if I may re-interject again, I mean, I, I'd be, I'd be looking to trade this thing at four thousand hours at the most, because you're, you're gonna be at that point where it's gonna start declining in value rapidly, and, and especially is, there, as hard as this thing is getting used. And if, if, in my opinion, I think that, that we, uh, we should go along with what Mr. Sharp is suggesting, as long as you guys, you have the people that are equipped to handle the maintenance that you would be handling of any, uh, either way.
Well, we wouldn't be doing the oil changes and stuff. We're not equipped to do that.
But that's included in the maintenance package that they would, that price covers that, that aspect of it. I, I just look at it and think, okay, if that's the purchase price, even if it's at the three-year mark and you say, okay, we're at four hundred, you know, we're at four thousand hours or whatever, then you s- sell it, theoretically, you're gonna get roughly a hundred and some, a thousand back by selling it to someone else. And then your net cost is two-something rather than almost five hundred.
Are we missing?
I mean, it's just, there's just a tremendous delta there. And we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. I, I think it's, unless I'm just not understanding something, but even if I'm off, I'm thinking, two hundred thousand dollar delta is nothing to sneeze at. That's, these are tax dollars that we take by force, I mean...
Is there something here that we're missing, DW?
The, the only, the only caution I would say, Mr. Sharp, is that adding in the residual value is really only if we want to keep that piece of equipment.
Yeah, but somebody determines that that's roughly what it's worth.
Yeah, 'cause...
So, 'cause if you wanted to buy it, that's what you'd be paying for.
Right, exactly.
So, seems to me you could sell it.
Or trade it.
You know, or trade it towards, towards the purchase of another one, if that's theoretically the residual value. Somebody, even if you only got a hundred thousand, you're, there's gonna be residual value.
I have a question. Do we have anyone on staff who does that, that sells our old equipment like that? Who would be in charge of that?
Well, we sell stuff on gov deals is what we current, everything goes on gov deals, and it's a bidding thing, whatever the highest bid would be.
So, have we ever had equipment like this, and we sold it and got any money back?
Not in my time here.
Not, not, not in this, not in this size, but we would, uh, usually it's just like trucks, cars, and a little bit of miscellaneous equipment, but...
Didn't, you know, didn't y'all get rid of the previous loader that you had?
That's right.
Before the decision to close land, landfills made, or when the decision to close landfills made? I was under the impression that, that a piece of equipment was fairly new was sold. I don't recall.
What, what does it cost if, uh, if we own the equipment and it breaks down and they can't get it fixed for two or three weeks? What, what would that cost?
Eighteen hundred to two thousand a week for rental, depending on what size of equipment.
So rentals aren't included in this?
If, if you purchase it, no.
But if we rent it, then they will give us one while it's broken down?
Yeah, but even if it's for a month, you're looking at like eight grand. I mean, I, I'm looking at a delta here of two hundred thousand dollars.
That's if you count the one twenty-three. One twenty-four.
Even if you don't, it's ten thousand less, and it's worth something at the end.
It's not gonna be worth that much. It's just...
They're claiming that it's worth a hundred and twenty-three nine at the end.
If, if you, if you, from my experience with heavy, like hundred horsepower tractors and, and, and you probably have experience with this as well, Ms. Parker, from your husband. I mean, to, to purchase a new tractor today and then, then go out four years from now, it goes without saying it's gonna go up in cost. And, uh, I think as, in my opinion, I think as long as, it's foolhardy to keep a machine like this more than four thousand hours. All right, Mr. Sharp? So, so if you, if you cycle it out in four thousand hours, and that's gonna happen, and you're saying you're putting a thousand hours a year on it?
About two.
Two thou- so cycle it out in two years. I mean, if it's well-kept and, uh, maintained, I think you're at maximum value. I, to me, I, from the numbers I'm looking at, it would probably be better to, um...
What would be worth it, what would it be worth at the end of two years, for four thousand? Which you're showing here is when it's four, four years.
Right.
What would be worth it two years?
I couldn't speak on that number. Couldn't say.
Do you have a question regarding the tires?
Yeah.
Um, that is not included in the maintenance?
So, th- this doesn't have regular tires on it?
Right.
They are the solid field, solid tires, so they don't run over the garbage, they don't pop.
Right.
So, you're gonna wear those, not tear them up?
There'll be twenty-plus thousand each time you have to replace them.
Yeah, the last time we did them, it was twenty-seven.
And if we lease them, they replace the tires?
If they wear out, they, they replace them during the lease.
Would it be expected that a tire, assuming careful use?
Yeah.
Two years, three years?
Yeah, I would, I would think, yeah, three years easily on the side of those tires. Most time what you find on the tires is when you're running through the garbage, if you hit something and spin, that takes chunks out of it, cuts it.
When we have a piece of equipment that's down for two weeks, a month, and we don't, we haven't leased it, so we don't have a, a replacement, what happens to staff? Do you pay for staff to sit there?
Well, we have to rent something, we have to get something immediately, because per our DEQ permit, we have to have so many pieces of equipment on property. Uh, so we have agreements in place with different companies to get something within twenty-four hours.
Well, didn't you say that, uh, you were gonna keep the old piece of equipment as a, as a...
Well, not this one, but we have another one.
Yeah.
That's a backup that we've actually had to move to the front line, because this one's given us the movement place so much trouble.
So, they have one back?
So, you have a backup?
Yeah. Well, we run two a day, because we, we do a hundred and fifty, two hundred tons a day, so there's two in there running.
Mr. Chair, I, one thing that's not being talked about is what, what you're using it for. And, and I don't know a lot about equipment. I'll be the first one to tell you that. But I do have a husband that is a farmer, and I know how often the farm equipment breaks down. And it gets to the point that after it has so many hours, that it's better to replace it, because you spend a lot of downtime, um, and you can't find people to work on them and so on and so forth. So, in my opinion, just by knowing as little as I do know about diesel-type tractors and, and things, in far, in a farm, you're at least going over a hayfield and, and you're not moving garbage. And who knows what else in your landfill and moving all that around? So, to me, I think the better thing is to do the lease.
Ms. Parker, if I may, with all due respect, we, your husband and I both farm. Um, I'd a whole lot rather be on a flat surface than I had driving over a hayfield, even though hayfields are mostly smooth. I, one of them that I ran is rough as a cob, and beats me to death when I'm on it. And, uh, it just means I gotta slow down. But I think that, uh, to, to compare one to the other, again, for a piece of equipment like this, at the end of the day, assuming reasonable care is being taken, we look at the hours on the machine. I mean, I was looking at new tractors the other day, or used tractors. And when you take a tractor that's got thirty-five hundred, four thousand hours on it, and compare that to the price of that same model, the same equipment, it, they almost lose half their value when you get to, to that, twice those hours, seven or eight thousand hours. And, and I wouldn't expect anybody to, to feel that, that we would need to keep a machine over that four thousand-hour limit. And it's, it's just like, uh, we have the, the sheriff back there, he's, he feels that at certain miles and so forth, you gotta cycle those cars out. And it, at, at that point, uh, on the machine we're talking about, ag- again, that, that sweet spot on getting rid of it's about four thousand hours, and you're putting two thousand a year on it. Um, to me, when you go to trading that, you, you've got something you can still trade or keep as a backup, because quite honestly, we're getting started again in our landfill, and, and we don't have the equipment, um, so to speak. So, so there's an investment to be made here. And, uh, I, I, when you look at the numbers from Mr. Sharp's perspective, it, and knowing that we're getting the maintenance with it, I think we're far better off to make the purchase.
Anybody else?
I can only speak for my equipment, my downtime. Warranties don't cover near enough. I mean, I have a tractor right now that has eleven hundred hours on it, it's sitting in the field right now, dead to the world. Hydraulic system has gone off for the third time in three months. So, I know when I take it, I won't have it for a month, and it may work when I get it back, and it may not. There's a lot of benefits to consider in the lease, um, when things like that, because, yeah, it's case equipment, it's supposed to be great equipment, but there's always one that gives you trouble.
I, I lean towards the lease.
I'll call for the vote. May I make a motion? Let's just make a decision so we can go on to the next.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we purchase.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Davis made the motion to purchase, Mr. Sharp second it. Roll call, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
No. No.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
I don't think you have to vote, then y'all won't know what I think, right?
You gotta vote.
I'll vote no. So, the motion fails, so we have another motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R. zero eight one one two five dash zero seven, uh, the lease for the solid waste loader.
Motion by Mrs. Parker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tuck, Mr. Davis.
No.
Mr. Sharp.
No.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Tuck?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. We go for the lease.
Thank you.
Board comment reports, none. I mean, excuse me, board committee reports. Board comments, hearing none. We move on to county.
Mr. Chair?
What?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I have a comment, yeah. I know they'd be shocked to hear that. Uh, we just had a, a recent meeting with some members of the EDA, and in that meeting, I, I asked what the mission of the EDA is, and it was mentioned that they are to, uh, bring revenue to the county and bring new business to the county. And anyway, for, for a long time, I've been, um, harping on this because as a forty-year business owner in Bedford County myself, um, and I know plenty of men like me who run businesses, and I, I call it a large, small business. There's about twenty people that, that depend upon me to make good decisions every day. And it's, uh, every one of them that I talk to will tell you that it's virtually, I won't say impossible, but it's very difficult to find new employees, and especially employees with skills, uh, anymore. And I think that the mission of the EDA, um, oh, one other thing that I've heard, it said that the EDA, I asked them why we need to bring more bus- new businesses into Bedford County, and members of the EDA have flat-out told me, well, 'cause we need better-paying jobs in Bedford County. And, and, and you know, you couldn't spit in my face and, and make me more angry um, because myself and the others of us who run small businesses in this county, we do pay very well. Anyway, we might not be able to pay what Bedford County pays their employees, but anyway, um, so I think that the mission of the EDA, I'm firmly convinced that the mission of the EDA should be to, if, if they're gonna do anything, is, is to support Bedford County existing businesses. Let's play to our strengths. And, and I don't need them to give me money or do anything for me. I'm quite content doing my own thing. Um, I, quite honestly, I don't know what the EDA could do for me. It's kinda like the government. Just don't hurt me. And, and by trying to bring in these businesses, so to speak, they're spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money. Nobody in this county, except for those of you present, have any idea how much money is being spent on an annual basis in the EDA's expenditures. I won't call it a budget. The New London Commerce Center's an example. It's hemorrhaging probably a million dollars annually. And that's money that could be used for our landfill and, and other essential services, um, retaining valuable employees in this county. So I would like to strongly suggest that we, we reconfigure the purpose of the EDA to, to support Bedford County businesses by not creating competition, stealing first, bringing in businesses that would take my employees. You know, I mean, I, I'm not, w- we would certainly, uh, we strive to be competitive and provide the best for our staff. And I, I don't want to be misunderstood on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, every meeting, we come in here and we, our citizens go to a lot of trouble to come up here and speak to us. A lot of them are anxious, high anxiety, nervous. We limit them to three minutes every time they get up here to talk. I think, I think the board should do the same under their comments. We should limit ourselves to three minutes for each comment. We ask our citizens to keep it to three minutes. I think we should honor that request ourselves.
Mr. Chair, as long as I get to bank it for every time I don't speak.
Long as you what?
Long as I don't speak, I wanna bank it for the next one.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. Um, this past Saturday, I was invited down to speak to a homeowner association at the lake. We had fifty-some people show up. Just wanted to publicly thank the sheriff for coming with me. We had some questions that were sent ahead of time, and he was very kind to come join me. And I'd encourage you, if you have an opportunity, it's, it's a great hour to be spent with your constituents if you go to things like that 'cause, uh, when I ask them what we could be doing better or different, when the only thing you hear back is, uh, could you get the trash cans? Could they, could they push them out of the right-of-way and bring them down the driveway? It's a good day when that's the only thing they complained about.
I usually don't have any trouble with the sheriff coming to see me.
Anyone else? Ms. Park, Ms. Basely? I, I hear where you're coming from, Mr. Johnson, but I'm thinking back through all the meetings, and I really don't see any real abuse from the board where we go on and on. Like I said before, I, I got the record of the shortest meeting, and that's my only ammunition where if someone gets close to that, where I can comment and carry it over.
Yeah.
To the point where they can't be...
I, I would have the record if he hadn't done that.
Okay, Mr. Hicks, any reports?
Um, in, in the next agenda, you'll have a, uh, some draft minutes from the Public Works Committee. But I did just wanna highlight one other item, that we did review the first draft of some of the floor plans for the sheriff's office expansion in the DSS building, and talked about what that square footage was and how the building was configured. And Public Works Committee was, thought it was heading in the right direction, and you know, we're just, staff will continue to work with the design team from Spectrum Architects in order to refine some of the questions and comments, and we'll be coming back at a future meeting with a little bit more polished, um, presentation of a floor plan so we can discuss that in a little bit more detail. But I think, I, I think we're heading in the right direction with, with those buildings. Um, the only other thing I had was just, we don't, we don't really apply for a whole lot of statewide awards, but we decided to this year, so, and we were successful. We received a Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Award, uh, one of the few in the state to receive that designation. And this was for a fairly innovative and collaborative initiative called Canning for a Cause. And that was, uh, basically the role of taking the, the cannery and transitioning that into a, a vegetable stew for food insecure residents. And, uh, it was a great collaboration of a unique group of, uh, agencies across the county with Bedford Community, Bedford Community Health Foundation, the Cooperative Extension Office, Hunters for the Hungry, the, uh, Health Department, and, and of course Parks and Rec, you know, they run the cannery. So anyways, it was, it was just a really good, a lot of volunteer hours went into that, and we'll have somebody from the Virginia Association of Counties in a, in a future meeting come present that to the board, uh, for that work. But, uh, we're allowing us to do that type of work, really. And, uh, but anyways, it was just a, a real, a real good award and for a really good project. So that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. We have one board appointment. That's for the Central Virginia Alcoholics Safety Actions Program. Has requested that Deck Hardy be reappointed for a second term. And, uh, any discussion, comments?
He's a resident of my district, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we reappoint Deck Hardy, um, as the Bedford County rep on the Central Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a reminder, we still have an open place on the board of zoning. Uh, I forgot, I forgot to talk to that person I told you I was gonna talk to, so I'll try to get with him in the next week or so. And we have, have a county attorney report?
Nothing further at this time, Mr. Chair.
Board information, none. Counter, Mr. Hicks?
Yeah, the, uh, next meeting is Monday, August twenty-fifth. That is noteworthy because that'll be our last Monday meeting until we transition to our Tuesday meetings. So anyways, we'll see everybody at that meeting. And we, one item we will be talking about in the work session and probably voting on maybe is the PPTRA, Property Tax Relief Rate. So we'll have that discussion that evening amongst whatever else comes up.
All right, we're gonna have two board members missing, missing that meeting. You gonna call him? The other board member, he don't wanna talk and drive, so... Anyway, we should be good. All right. Anybody want a adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.